...second by Mr. Gallo. Agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you were asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello. The resolution I'm looking at, in the agenda, there was a comment about a new history book for the eighth grade on early American history. There it is.
Fifteen years.
There you go. Can I get a copy of that book somehow?
Mr. Sherman?
You are welcome to come to the central office here and take a look, I would think. I don't know about lending it out, but you're welcome to come and make a cup of coffee and make yourself comfortable.
Okay, can I do that?
And take a look, sure.
Can I do that Friday?
Absolutely.
Okay, should I see you?
I'll leave it with my secretary at the desk, right here, the reception desk.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the first time I've seen that.
You did a good job fielding that.
We'll make it like Starbucks. Then you can use the bathroom.
Dr. Shown, do you have anything for us this evening?
I do, I do. I'm gonna do something, something unusual this evening. I am gonna turn over my time during my superintendent's report over to Mr. De Silva. And to start that off, I think that, yes, we are, I think that Mr. Fair is going to show you a short video, so if you would be kind enough to check it out.
I started volunteering when I was 17-years-old at a place for children with disabilities, and it made sense for me. And I wanted to figure out how to merge psychology and special education together, and I became a school psychologist as a result. I guess I wear a lot of different hats. I evaluate children to determine what their potential for learning is. I develop individualized education plans to assist them with learning. I do crisis counseling. I do weekly counseling. I sit on I and R S. I am a resource to teachers and all students here in the building.
Topics that when it comes to emotional well-being, emotional health.
Thanks, Dennis. So, I asked Dennis to play the beginning of that video. I'm just gonna stand up so I can see you. I asked Dennis to play the beginning of that video because I got some bullet points from Dr. Shown on exactly what Ms. Karisi does, just so that I could sort of do a quick introduction, but I thought that video might do a better job than I would. So that talks about Ms. Karisi's role as a school psychologist up at the ridge and a little bit about what she does as a member of the child study team. What it doesn't talk about is that she is the co-coordinator for the flight team for Bergen County, which is a team of, I guess, other psychologists, right? So if there are other districts that are in need, in crisis, that need help over and above what they're able to give, Kathy is one of the people who coordinates, you know, people from our district and other districts to, you know, to go out and help. So when she's not busy helping the students in our district, right, making their day a little bit brighter, she's out at other districts making somebody else's day a little bit less gloomy, maybe. Later on in the video, she talks about how she's the executive coordinator, right, at Camp Acorn. I'm not even gonna ask when you sleep, 'cause that's, you know, we can do that when we're dead, right? So, we saw that video along with four or five others back in December. And after watching that video, I couldn't help but think, wow, you know, like, there's, that sort of takes over and above sort of to the next level, the stuff, the stuff that you do for here, for other districts, and then for, you know, your campers. And just really, what a, what a, what an awesome story to tell, right? So last year, I had the privilege of being the chairman of an organization called New Jersey Car, stands for New Jersey Coalition of Auto Retailers. And the mission of that organization is to advocate for the interest of New Jersey's retail car and truck dealers. It entails a lot of time away from business and a lot of, you know, just a lot of, a lot of time to do that job. Much like being a board member, it's, you know, the pay is fantastic, right? It's a volunteer thing, so there is none. So one of the things that the association does to recognize the time that the chairman puts in is they allow the outgoing chairman to make a donation to the charity of their choice. So my term ended just a couple of weeks after we saw that video, and couldn't think of why, I shouldn't say that, I split my donation in two, between my Rotary Club Gift of Life program and I have, I am so happy to have a check from the New Jersey Car Charles E. Walton Charitable Foundation on the amount of $5,000 for Camp Acorn. Thank you for doing what you do for us and for others and your campers and being the change that you want to see in the world. I'm so happy to be able to give that to you.
Thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Sherman. It means a lot, thank you.
It does, and it will, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Kathy is, Kathy is just so humble. And when I, when I had called her, I think that I sent her into a tailspin. But she didn't call me back, at least she said, "You better call the superintendent." Definitely so.
She was actually on a flight team call when I reached out to her and said, "Your boss is looking for you."
Your boss is looking for you. And I meant what I said, Kathy, it was, it was, it was all good. You make such a difference here that when you, when you go outside of here and make a difference beyond that, we couldn't ask for anything more. We're lucky to have you here, and your children at Camp Acorn are lucky to have you here. So, you're welcome.
Thank you, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Could I just add one other thing?
Please.
Kathy has a fundraising dinner every year for Camp Acorn in May, and I've been going to it probably for the last, as long as you've been doing it. Eight hundred people attend this dinner. It's an amazing dinner, it's a tricky trade dinner, and there are hundreds of baskets that are, you can put your ticket in for, and I, it just amazes me that she has the time to do that. That's what I do when I'm not sleeping.
So Kathy, with that said, we have more stuff in our board meeting, we have board meeting, like stuff, stuff, stuff. So if you would like to, may I taking you away from something? Please go, enjoy your evening, drive safe, and be proud.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Wicker.
Yes, I have a budget presentation.
That was an awesome job. That was great.
Good job. Okay, um, thank you everybody very much. Tonight is the last budget presentation that we have scheduled for the 2018-2019 budget. It is an item on the agenda tonight for the board to vote on. This is the final adoption of the budget. It has gone to the county in mid-March, we sent it to them. They gave it a very thorough review, both on the financial side as well as several narratives that we had to supply as well. Came back with a couple of comments, went back and passed the review with positive results from them. Brings us forward to tonight, what's tonight's presentation's gonna be is two areas that we haven't discussed yet, a couple of comments about special education as well as benefits, and then I'm gonna go into a budget summary with the, some of the slides from the previous two meetings that we had for the budget. With that, special education, special education is a large component of the budget, so those will also include out-of-district tuition, related security services such as speech, physical therapy, one-to-one, general administration of child study teams, as well as some self-contained classes that we have. The special education costs represent about sixteen and a half percent of the proposed budget for eighteen nineteen, for the eighteen nineteen school year. The out-of-district tuition is one of the largest components of that sixteen and a half percent. I'm gonna go into a little bit more detail on the very next slide. For out-of-district tuition, it's split into two different parts, those that attend special ed, post-special education students that attend an out-of-district placement, as well as some general education students as well. The seventy-one special education students that we currently have are split over mostly four schools. They can either attend a private school with disabled, Burn County Special Services, some public schools that offer a special ed education that fits the student's needs, as well as out-of-state, some cases, out-of-state schools. There's also the out-of-district tuition category, we have approximately forty-eight students. These are all high school students who attend either the Burn County Academies program that they have, or the Burn County Technical and Vocational Schools. There's also another Burn County program, Burn County Applied Sciences, we have a student that also attends that. Employee benefits is the other category that we're gonna speak about tonight very briefly. What employee benefits is, when we speak about it, it's the contractual benefits, health prescription and dental medical benefits that are offered to district staff, workers' compensation, social security payments that are the responsibility of the Board of Education, pension payments as well, tuition reimbursement, and payment for accumulated sick time, which is also contractually agreed upon. For the eighteen nineteen year, there's a proposed budget of a little bit over eleven and a half million dollars to cover those items I just discussed, represents approximately seventeen percent of the total operating budget. And with that, as I said before, I'm gonna go into a little bit of summary from the past few meetings, some of the slides that I had discussed. The overall budget itself for the eighteen nineteen school year is just over seventy million dollars, seventy million oh ninety-seven one oh six. Its revenue is taken from the tax levy of sixty-three million dollars, some state aid and other revenues, a fund balance, which is funds that were carried over from previous years, and as well as some federal grants and state grants that we are receiving of. For tax information, tax information, the net valuation taxable of the township, five billion seven hundred twenty million dollars, gives us a school tax rate of just over 1.09%. And the, therefore, gives us a 2018 school tax for every $100,000 that a Malawal was assessed, the tax is just over $1,000, represents an increase from the 2017 rate of eighteen dollars and sixty cents per year. Again, eighteen dollars and sixty cents for every $100,000 that you home and work. Enrollment, something again that was discussed in the previous slide, we had an enrollment in October 2017 of just under 2,900 students. That's in district, it does not include the out-of-district placements that I discussed earlier. There's, has been a decline since the 2008-2009 years, in the decline of about 2.2% per year. However, we're looking at our forecast for the next couple of years, based on all the information that we have available to us, we do see that decline slightly lessening to a little bit less than 1% for the next few years. Staffing, again, something that we discussed in our last meeting, the budget has five and a half decreases in positions, there's three grade-level positions at the K through five level, as well as two and a half special ed positions at the K through eight level. There's also a few staffing increases that are proposed, the English as a second language and speech language services, as psychologists, as well as a supervisor of instruction for the K-five level. One other thing I highlighted last time, I'll highlight again, the speech language service, by increasing that position to making it a full-time position, it also no longer, we no longer have a need to have an outside service, outside agency come in, we'll be able to provide those services now in-house. Special revenue, again, the area that I had spoken about, we have two sources where funds come from that, federal and state aid, I'm sorry, federal and state sources, state aid is in our operating budget, it's separate. The federal is 695,000, that's primarily money from IDVA and the ESA grants that we receive, and the state appropriation of 22,200, those are state funds we receive where we are the custodian of them, therefore, non-public schools within our district, but we're still required to include that within our budget figures. And the last item to discuss, again, another part of the budget, our debt services, a separate fund, a separate section of the budget. Currently, for the eighteen nineteen school year, we have two bonds that are gonna be currently outstanding. Those bonds are fully funded by the tax levy when the bonds were originally issued. The both bonds combined has a budgeted principal interest payments for next year, or a scheduled principal and interest payments of 1,628. Those bonds were approved by voters back in, by referendum in 2002 and 2003. They are scheduled to be fully paid off in 2022 and 2023, they're thirty-year bonds, I'm sorry, twenty-year bonds. And with that, that was the last slide for the, for the presentation. End on that, and, um, if any, questions?
First three slides, may I have copies of those, please?
Yes, of course.
I don't have that. The second question I have, more important, is our total tax rate is 2.68%, that's above the cap by .68. How's that coming down?
How is that derived? Is, how is it derived, is your question?
We're just going for next year.
We exceed the two, we exceed the 2% cap, by .68.
Correct.
How are you bringing that below that, or down to that 2%?
As we begin to build the budget for the next year, so we're not increased, going over again.
He needs to understand why we're okay, we're coming at 2.68.
Had you get over the cap, is your question?
Why are you okay?
There were two reasons that we were allowed to exceed the 2% of cap. There's a healthcare adjustment, as well as some bank cap that we were able to utilize. We, based on the information that we have available to us for healthcare and the anticipated increase that we have been provided to by our advisors, what it expects to be for the next school year, the budget software in the county and the state allows us to exceed the 2% if we can prove and justify that we anticipate going over that need and have a need to go over 2%. We supply that information, and that's how we're increasing it by that .68.
Bank cap and healthcare extension.
Yeah.
In the, in the slides on the special ed, did that include the transportation costs for special ed? That's personally the tuition and administration cost?
Correct, yes, transportation is held in different categories, separate from special ed, whether there's transportation included for special ed purposes, for our local, to and from purposes, for athletic events, that's all held separately.
Okay.
Thank you.
Again, thank you everybody.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Fair, do you have anything for us this evening?
I have no report.
Presidential report. Don't really have anything, but I'll just incorporate one little thing I wanted to mention. I wanted to shout out Mala Schools Foundation, so as a liaison to the Schools Foundation and as the president of the Board of Education, I want to thank you very much for a wonderful event, Mala Schools, the Thunderbird Run, correct, this past Sunday. Fantastic, everything was great, it was great to be able to get your results right on your phone at the end of the race, so I appreciated that, so now I know how I have to work harder next year, so, but thank you so very much, we really are very appreciative of all that you did. Board committee reports, anyone have any board committee reports for this evening?
For policy, real quick, fifteen E, we have first reading of thirty-two eighty-two, forty-two eighty-two, use of social networking sites by teaching staff members and by support staff. They're not mandated policies, but they basically provide a little bit of extra guideline, a little bit of extra structure in, you know, proper use of.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Sherman?
On behalf of the Committee of Relations Committee, I want to thank Dr. Shown for including in her weekly blast the importance of tonight's meeting and the meeting on, which is coming up on, in May, May ninth, dealing with technology. Unfortunately, there's, there are no crowds out there.
Well, we have the videotape, so anybody can go onto our website.
That's another thing, can we ever see the number of hits on that?
I don't know if we ever talked about it.
I was told you could do it.
We'll check that out, Peter, we'll check that out. I know, Christine, you have an instructional report, if you want to do that, is that okay with you?
Yes, that's fine. We discussed it.
Yes, we did.
We discussed it.
Yes.
I look forward to her giving it to me.
I do too, and everyone, this, right now, marks the last instructional committee reporter for Mr. Sherman. You can say anything you want. This is your time.
Actually, before I give it, I'll just say thank you to this board and to every board that has served this fabulous district since I've been here in 2005, for all the support of our students and families and our staff on this, Mala, so good to know, so, so thank you. Okay, instructional report.
Yeah, yeah.
We have on the agenda tonight two new classes for curriculum writing. One is applications of Math Lab, which is a math support class, they're both high school classes, by the way, and the other is AP Computer Science Principles. You also have a textbook approval on, on the agenda, the book is making its way around the table. That's an eighth-grade book, as with all textbook approvals, it goes through committee of administrators, teachers, parents, students, they look at a number of recommended texts, best practice, the things that are recommended, the books that are recommended in the field at the time. This is a 2018 book, it also comes with an ebook, so you have your actual textbook in hand as well as the online component. It's about a hundred dollars a text, I know Peter asked me that question before, so again, that comes with the ebook part. You'll also see Karen Academy, Courtney Corella and Dawn Sadistano. Courtney Corella is a teacher at the middle school, she's a coordinator of our gifted program, Dawn Sadistano is a school psychologist, Agnesse Ross. They're going to present on our new test for our gifted and talented program called the COGAT. COGAT's not a new test, but it will be Mala. Courtney did a beautiful presentation at the instructional committee meeting, talking about why this test is the right move for us, so we're really confident, and we really want to kind of strip away the mystery surrounding this program and the test to all of our third and fifth grade parents. So there'll be a parent night coming on, on May 21st, so we look forward to that. And also, on the agenda tonight is a mentoring plan and a PD plan, both of them are required by the state, mentoring is for new teachers, whether they be brand-new to the profession or just new to Mala, we want to make sure that we take care of them and support them in their time here, their first year and beyond. And also the professional development plan, what are we going to present to our teachers, internal, external, what are our important topics, so that's something that we do every year as well. That'll be the agenda tonight. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
With the professional development plan? A lot of it said ongoing, ongoing.
Sure.
Ongoing, ongoing.
Yes.
What's new to it that wasn't there last year?
Actually, that plan, hmm, I don't think there is anything new, because those focus, focus, focuses, I don't know what's the word. Focus, I don't know, that sounds, that sounds really highfalutin, doesn't it? Yeah. You know, with professional development, you know, if you keep changing, as you know as a former educator, if you keep changing the focus all the time, you lose the focus. So these are, these, these things that are on the plan, whether they be mandated things or things we've been working on for this year, the last couple of years, so we think are important topics to continue.
In both cases, the mentoring and this PD, there must have been feedback from the faculty. Are they, are they taken seriously, incorporated?
Always, yes.
So, you.
Thanks, Chris.
Cam, can I just say quickly something?
Yes, so, Chris.
At this point, I, just on behalf of the instructional committee and the board, I thank you greatly for all that you've done for our district and for our students, and I know I've learned a great deal from you, and I really hope that, you know, people come into the profession of education with the enthusiasm that you show every day with your dedication. It's, it's really an honor to have worked with you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, Mr. Gallo?
And I just want to remind folks that on May 2nd, our bids for the steam building are coming in, so let's hope and pray they come in under the budget and we have a quality and responsible contractor. We've had a very good experience with our contract managers so far, so
They really have been excellent.
Things are looking good.
Really.
On, on that, Mr. Gallo, you reminded me of one other item. The bids do come in on May 2nd, we have Board of Education, we have them scheduled for May 9th. We do not know if we're gonna have enough opportunity, and the one after that is scheduled for May 25th. We would like to, if there is a successful bidder, after it passes review by our professionals, we may have a special Board of Education meeting scheduled between the 9th and the 25th, just so we can award that contract if we don't have everything back by the 9th. So I wanted to just put that out there, that it may be a possibility for a meeting in between there, we would try to keep it just to that one item.
Will we get material before the meeting? On the bid, please.
And I just want to echo what Prima said about Christine DePuris and the Curriculum Committee. I've only been on the Curriculum Committee for a year and a bit, and it's by far the best committee to be on, it's the bread and butter of what we do in the district.
That we'll all know.
It's an exclusive organization, but Christine's leadership in the organization and all the supervisors who come in, and the passion that they demonstrate for our students and for the district is always amazing, and we are gonna miss Christine's enthusiasm and leadership of that committee greatly.
What a great team, what a great team we have, really, you know, thank you, Mike.
Yeah, and, and just like this textbook thing, so, we looked at the textbook, but the supervisors came in and they were already looking at totally from an integrated perspective of technology and how the kids can engage with it, audio and visual materials. It's not just like, oh, they, they go to the Barnes and Noble of bookstores and they go, of textbooks and go, oh, this one looks nice, it's a nice shiny one. No, they really think about it and how it really fits into the program from all perspectives, so.
I'm gonna spend tomorrow off the board office with a couple of comments. I'll be here all day.
But you might have to share the coffee.
To the council outside.
Two coffees.
Why are you encouraging him?
Our, our hope is, is that Ben's enthusiasm for the text will improve our scores in trivia.
Yes, yes.
I have no comment.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
I just want to pick up on something you had said about the amazing event this past Sunday. As someone who was forced against his will to wear a t-shirt, and you can remember events on all five days, and surprisingly, many of you took pictures of me, thank you, Dr. Shown.
Oh, I got a great one, do you want to see it?
No. Please, God. With that said, I just, I just want to congratulate the Schools Foundation on another successful, and a much larger event this year than last, and a much amazingly well-run day. It went off without a hitch, at least from, you know, from what everyone saw, and I'm sure they raised a ton of money. An organization which, once again, you know, as the immediate past president, sitting across from my predecessor, sitting next to somebody who ran a run, you know, we are all intertwined, across from, you know, the sponsor. We all are intertwined, it's all for the benefit of the children, it's all, the sole purpose of the organization is to raise money, they're all professionals, they all have jobs, they all have kids, they all have stuff going on in their lives, they take time out of their day to raise money, to just give it away, back of the school district, for the benefit of the district, for our teachers, for our students. So, just kudos to them, it's, it's, once again, you know, eighteen years, 1.8 million now, seven, eight million, it's just gone right back in the district, so, that's all.
The run was so well-coordinated, the ladies that, that put it together, and intertwined is absolutely right, and I don't think it makes a difference if you sit on one board or you sit on all boards, the bottom line is that you're volunteering your time for kids, and for our kids, and that run was absolutely amazing from the beginning to the end, and somebody called the Run Gods because the weather was gorgeous, so, I want to truly thank everybody.
And one last point, I see Miss Uteau in the audience out there, and glad to see you ran, it's awesome to see you out there, but I'm also happy to publicly state that you have the fastest kindergarten girl in the district.
And our own two board members were medalists, but did not wear their medals tonight out of embarrassment.
I think you should have, I walked beautifully.
Oh, did you?
I walked.
I want to see the two, two pictures. I can see you walking away that.
It is on Facebook and social media, which I have always, my days is now forever.
On the website.
It's all good.
Thank you. Say we have any, any other.
No.
Jdigress, because we have no board member remarks or comments on the next up. Okay, old business, I have a motion to move old business. Mr. Gallo, second by Ms. Conoco. Okay.
Great for, huh? Okay, for the minute, Mr. Wenderkowitz. Ms. Sacone.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski?
Yes.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
Ms. Navertish?
Yes.
Dr. Morthe?
Yes.
And Ms. Barron?
Epstein.
Fifteen, new business, I'd like to take A through T. Motion to proceed, Mr. Wenderkowitz, second by Dr. Morthe. Do you have any comments on this portion of the agenda or questions? All right, could you take a roll call on that, please?
Mr. Wenderkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Sacone?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes, except on fifteen A, I am abstaining on checks zero nine zero two six two and zero nine zero three eight six.
Thank you. Mr. Kizmarski?
Yes.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
Ms. Navertish?
Yeah.
Dr. Morthe?
Yes.
And Ms. Barron?
Yes.
Now sixteen new business, sixteen A through NN, could we proceed?
Check right out the B and the P, stretch it through.
B? E? Okay, so we'll take a new business, A.
D, D through.
C through, okay. A, everyone's good to go with that one, okay.
Sixteen A only, motion second.
Dr. Morthe?
Oh, we did it, thank you. Okay, sixteen A only, Mr. Wenderkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Sacone?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski?
Yes.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
Ms. Navertish?
Yes.
Dr. Morthe?
Yes.
And Ms. Barron?
Yes.
Now we'll just take sixteen B, motion to proceed on that. Mr. Wenderkowitz, second by Dr. Morthe. Yes.
Suzanne's been a, the family, has been a family affair. Her father was principal in our district, her mother was an elementary teacher, and she was also an elementary teacher. And for those who served against her at the, at the negotiating deal, she was an adversary, a good adversary. She's served our district well, and she's served her, her people well over the years, and she will be missed.
I do want to say something also, that I appreciate having worked with Sue, you know, and I appreciate all that she's done for our school and her service to the MAWA school system. So thank her very much.
I ask this, if I could, if I could just speak on behalf of Sue Dorsey. I've had the opportunity to work with Sue Dorsey as president of our association for, for the last five years. If there's anyone who cares considerably about the teachers with whom she works and the children that they teach, it absolutely is Sue Dorsey. I have enjoyed the relationship that we have had over the course of the years, through good times and through bad times. I've always trusted her opinion on moving forward. And in speaking with her colleagues, getting prepared for tonight, I'm going to tell you, they believe the same. They, they're going to miss her, there's, there's no doubt about it. But they also wish her the very best as she moves on, because she definitely deserves it. So thank you for letting me talk on her behalf, but I just, as superintendent, working closely with an association and a president, I think it was appropriate. Thank you.
Yes, who, I mean, Ms. Dorsey's going to be sorely missed. My daughter had her actually at GW, and she was just the epitome of what a teacher should be, truly. Loving, caring, Misses Second Grade at that time. And in working with her through the years, it, it's just been a pleasure, and our district will definitely miss her. I, we wish her well, I wish her well, and I hope she plays a lot of golf. Because I know that she wants golf, so.
She wants to. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all right.
Yep, I got the motion second, so. Okay, roll call for item sixteen B, Mr. Wenderkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Sacone?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski?
Yes.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
Ms. Navertish?
Yes.
Dr. Morthe?
Yes.
And Ms. Barron?
Yes.
So now we can take sixteen C through NN, motion to proceed, please. Mr. Gallo, second by Ms. Wenderkowitz. Any questions, comments, concerns?
I will, I will vote in affirmative on sixteen D, but reluctantly.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Wenderkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Sacone?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski? Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
Ms. Navertish?
Yes.
Dr. Morthe?
Yes.
And Ms. Barron?
Yes.
Okay, public questions or comments? This section of public participation will be limited to fifteen minutes.
Evelyn Flot, Bara Forty-three, Thunderbird Run. I have a couple of things I'd just like to address. So you spoke about Sue Dorsey. I also, you know, appreciate the contact I've had with her. She didn't teach my children, but also Joan Mangan was a wonderful instructor to, you know, my daughter had the fortunate experience to be in her classes with the sewing and the cooking. And I was a Girl Scout leader for my daughter's troop at that time, and she was gracious enough to let us use the room after school. And I'd go in there at the end of the day getting set up, and the kids absolutely loved Mrs. Mangan. They would come in and they'd have their leftover salsa that they'd be rushing to get home. And really, you know, I will miss her personally, so.
That's wonderful.
Thank you.
I wanted to ask about, on the March fourteenth agenda, about, they had the extension for sixty days for the construction, the proposals for the construction and oversight of the Monopole. So we're almost coming to that sixty days, I believe? Any news about what's going on?
We are, no news that, that the finance committee has been shared with at this time. There's been nothing to share with them, but you're correct, we are coming up on the sixty-day end of that, so at the May ninth meeting, there would be action on it, on that item.
Okay. The science assessments, any updates with science assessments?
Do we have any, Christine, no?
No.
Okay, so May second for the scheme lab bids. The storefront replacement for building five, where do we stand on that right now?
All the shop drawings have been submitted to the architect, so they're currently being reviewed right now. And we're still scheduled for that to begin probably right after the baseball season ends. Baseball team's in there using the locker room right now. So we'll probably try to coincide as closely, as closely as we can with when they're out of the building to go in there and begin.
Okay, great. And then the parking lot, any news on the parking lot, the high school parking lot?
As far as the traffic study is going to be concerned, we're going to be continuing the meeting with, with our facilities committee to discuss the findings, so to speak, and the recommendations.
Okay, so maybe at the next meeting or the one after, we'll have an update?
I was saying the near future, so.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm thinking June probably, probably makes sense, certainly by June.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Really just looking for an update on safety stuff.
We're still continuing to plan for the summer and projects that, that we may have. I know that Kyle is working with Scott, our supervisor of building and grounds, to put in some of the initiatives that we have mentioned at prior meetings. So that's it at this point.
I can speak to the license.
The high school.
At the, at the high school now.
It's up and running?
It is up and running, so when you go into the mid, what's the middle space called?
Oh, the double, double door entrance.
Double door entrance. You go into the middle, you actually have to swipe your license, and I'm not sure where that information, that's going to the person.
It goes to the person at the security desk at this point, and then there's a visitor pass that's opened up, and we'll see how successful that is, and then look to do the same kinds of things, as I had mentioned in past meetings, in our buildings that currently have that double door entry system. So that would be.
But that's something that's already in place, is that there's, it used to just be, they would look at it visual recognition. This is now very formal, like feels like when you put your passport in global entries, you put it in, it checks everything, it approves you.
You have to return the badge.
Did you make a proof payment?
I barely made it through, I think there were questions, but.
Your face, your picture taken.
Yes, and your picture is taken, too. It really, if you ever do global enter, if you enter through those kiosks when you come in, you know, from out of the country, it's exactly like that. And the picture, similar, my face never shows because I'm too short and cameras appear. So, but it, and they give you, like, you get a slip of paper, you take it to the desk. It's already something that's in place, and it seems definitely like a more improved system.
And we'd like to do it in all of our schools eventually, but that may require some construction. We're also still in discussion about an SRO officer and whether or not that will be a consideration for our district. We have to fine tune some of the details and the financial implications of that, so we're working through that.
And for that, are you having that discussion for the entire school district or just for certain schools?
We'll see, I don't know yet. And, and I'm not trying to be vague for any other reason, that a recommendation hasn't been made and a decision hasn't been made necessarily between the police department and, and myself.
Okay.
So would it necessarily be the entire district? I don't know. We tend to start things small and thoughtfully with anything that we do, and I anticipate that the recommendation for an SRO officer will be done the same day. I anticipate that.
That, that if you did it, it would start small?
We would start small.
Okay, do you have any idea of when you would think about that? Because obviously it's the end of the school year.
It is.
It's pretty unlikely that that's.
It's a great question.
Is that now, is that something that you're targeting to start in September?
If everything works out well and the board accepts my recommendation, I would love to start in September, yes.
So you, the meetings continue over the summer, right?
Meetings with our board?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So some of these things are going to happen during the summer?
Certainly.
When do you expect to have that conversation? Because I'd like to make a point to kind of be here and be involved and understand when you're starting to implement things specifically, because I'd like to know where you're thinking about doing them and if it's going to be at all schools and that type of thing. So I don't want to.
No, and I, and I very much appreciate your question, and I would absolutely give, I don't know which board meeting I will do it at. But there are two things that you can do. The first is certainly the videos that, that we have will be online, so I will talk about it publicly at that point and the reasons for it. And you are also, as always, welcome to give me a call.
Okay.
So if it is during the summer and you're planning on going away next week, but you know that there's a board meeting coming up, just pick up the phone and go, are we going to, are you going to talk about it? I'm going to say yes, I'm going to be giving a recommendation.
Will that level of specificity be on the agenda?
Would the level of specificity?
You know what I mean, but will I be able to read that agenda and say, okay, this is the meeting, and they're going to talk about the resource officers?
The answer to that is probably yes, and I'm saying probably, only because it's not necessarily the recommendation, but the financial implication of it, I believe I would want the board to give me a yes. Okay, we're good to go. And that also makes it real official, because an SRO officer works for us during the day, but they remain a MAWA police officer, so the agreement is between both of us, so the answer to that is yes.
Okay, good, that's perfect, thank you. I'm going to just make a quick statement, just to kind of preempt that conversation, just to be kind of in the forefront of your minds, because I just wanted to say that if it's felt that a certain action is warranted for the safety of some of the students,